It is 5:30 if we could call the regular Amherst Exempt Village Board of Education meeting to order for the main meeting in the night by standing and pledging the flag and finding on the monitors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mrs. Gillis.
Here.
Dr. Messer.
Present.
Mrs. Wachols.
Present.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
I've entertained a motion to adopt the agenda as it's presented. There are motions and a second is any discussion or comments. Hearing or seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mrs. Wachols.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye. We have a couple of presentations this evening. Steve Sayers will now retire his speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. One of the things we started doing, I think it was two or three years ago, is recognizing our retirees with a video, with a district-wide video. It's been very well received and one of the things that allows us to do is not just to recognize our retirees at building level with our principals and various departments throughout the district, but doing something at the district level, not just here at a board meeting, but via website, social media, that we can really recognize our retirees and all that they meant to our district. So we've been doing these videos, I think this is the third year, maybe, maybe the fourth year, but Rachel has developed another video this year and would kind of like to give the board a sneak peek, I guess you could say, that this year's retiree video has not yet been made public. We wanted to share it here this evening. We have a couple of our retirees that were able to join us this evening, so at this time, I think, might just follow yours.
Congratulations on your retirement, Josie. Thank you for keeping us on our toes. Thank you for feeding our students. Hope you enjoy your time with your grandchildren. Well deserved.
Mrs. Powell, you've made it. It's your retirement. Congratulations. We're gonna miss you, but enjoy those grandkids. Enjoy that free time. Happy retirement.
Hi, Josie. Congratulations on your retirement. We are gonna miss you so much at Steel. Thank you for all that you've done over the years, for feeding all of our staff and students, and we're gonna enjoy being neighbors for a few more months. So congratulations, enjoy your retirement, enjoy your grandkids, and we'll miss you a lot.
Hey, Josie, just wishing you a happy retirement.
Happy retirement.
Congratulations, Josie.
Hey, Josie, I'm gonna miss you. I mean, who else can I, again, irritate and make these odd last-minute requests to accommodate all the crazy programming I do? So take a retirement from me annoying you. Love ya, good luck. See you later. Thank you.
Congratulations, MJ, on your retirement. Well deserved. Appreciate everything you've done for our students, for our faculty and staff. Look forward to seeing you on your bike, enjoying retirement and the grandkids. Have a great one.
Hi, Mrs. Laushen. Just wanted to say happy retirement. You have put in a lot of work, a lot of time, and you deserve it. So enjoy all your travels, enjoy your family. Thank you so much for everything you've done at Steel. We're gonna miss you. Enjoy your retirement.
Hi, Mary Jane. Congratulations on your retirement. We are gonna miss you dearly here at Steel. Thank you for all you've done to support our staff, myself, our students over the years, and enjoy your train trip and your retirement. Congratulations.
Hi, MJ. I just want to say thank you so much for all of your help this year. You are a great coach and mentor, and I can't imagine what next year will be without you. I hope you have the most fun on your retirement and get to travel a ton and spend a ton of time with family. Congrats and have a great retirement.
Hi, Mary Jane. What better way to send you off than record a message in your favorite room in the building? The testing room. But in all seriousness, congratulations on your retirement. I'm really happy for you. I know you want to spend time with those grandbabies and enjoy that time. I've really enjoyed working with you over these years. I've learned so much from you. You've been a great teacher, a great mentor, and a great friend. I will always cherish those memories, and hopefully we'll have some to come down the road. But good luck. Thank you. See you soon.
Hey, Mrs. Laushen, we are gonna miss you so much. I have so enjoyed working with you and I've learned so much, and I'm getting a bracelet made that says, "What Would MJ Do?", and I'm gonna wear it every day. Love you, we'll miss you.
Hey, MJ, we just wanted to wish you a happy retirement and enjoy your time on that train. Happy retirement.
Happy retirement. We love you.
Congratulations, Mary Jane. I'm so jealous.
I'm not jealous, I'm just gonna, I'm really sad because I love irritating you, and I'm gonna, who am I gonna irritate now? You know, and I walk in with those random questions. Good luck.
Thank you.
Best wishes. Thank you.
MJ, I'll miss you so much. It's been wonderful working with you. Please keep in touch. Take care. Bye. Happy retirement.
Okay. Happy retirement. Happy retirement, Mrs. Laushen.
Obviously, we're losing a wonderful group of people this year to retirement. It's certainly well deserved, and we wish all of them the very best. I did want to mention, then, including in the video, not just the staff that are retiring at the end of this school year, but this actually dates back, we had a couple of retirements last September, and then I think another one maybe in November, December. So again, this is everyone that has retired since last summer. And we also, Janet reached out to each of our retirees and personally invited them to be at the meeting tonight so they can see the video before it becomes public. And I think we have two of our retirees, Mary Jane and Josie, are able to be here this evening, and this time it's okay with the board. I'd like to introduce Mr. Teller.
Thank you for giving me some time. Wow. I'll start with MJ, and it's funny that Kim Hany said that, you know, "I like to irritate you" because I never can. She's the coolest person in the room, and I think she would tell a lot of white lies. I'd say, you know, "MJ, are we set on this?", and she'd say, "Of course we are." And then I would watch her, like, run around there, "Well, David, you gotta get that right." But she always wanted to put me at ease, and, you know, a heart of gold, a school counselor, through and through, just loves being with our kids. You will not find anybody who knows, you know, "Hey, this student's struggling." Well, that's because, you know, their dog just, you know, died, or their uncle's in the hospital, or something's going on. She knows all of her students inside and out, and the train ride is coming, so she talks about that. I'm so happy for her because she loves every moment that she's here, but then at the same token, she's like, "Joe, I'm ready." I mean, you know, "I'm ready to see the grand, I'm ready to see the grandkids, and I'm ready to travel and spend time with Ken," and who's retiring also, her husband with her. So just to speak, yeah, when I say she's a counselor inside and out, you know, she told me one time, you know, my dad was ill when I was spending a lot of time with him, and she said, "You know, Joe, I'll go sit with your mom." And I said, "Oh, really?", and she's like, "You know, that's just what I do. I like being around people and talking with them and visiting." And I thought, "Just what a different thing. I wasn't expecting to hear that." She's already volunteered to watch baby Tony when Nick and Olivia have theirs, so she's always just looking to, you know, share that sunshine, so, and I get to see her. She takes a lot of bike rides, so I'm always seeing her.
Bicycle, not motorbike.
And she wears a helmet, so at first she wasn't wearing a helmet, and so it was a joke. You gotta get the helmet on, so we want, you know, we want to make sure you're safe. So couldn't be more happy for MJ. And then there's Josie.
Yeah. I can't wait to hear this one.
So I kind of knew early on, this is my fourth year, and I kind of knew her, and I went down to the cafeteria and, you know, "Hey, I'm Joe Teller, I'm new, what's going on?", and she goes, "Oh, I know who you are." I thought, "Oh, wow, oh, yeah, I've been asking questions." She knew all about me, apparently. She got, "I've done my research, and let me tell you how I like to work my cafeteria." And I thought, "Okay." Every time, and sometimes she'd call me into her office, and she'd say-
And close the door.
She would say, "Joe, we need to talk. Why don't you come in and why don't you close your door? Or why don't you close the door behind you?", and I, and I knew that, okay, she's gonna tell me exactly what she's thinking, but it was always, always with respect, and, you know, we could have those conversations, but I would always put her through the wringer, and I would know she could always just do whatever it took. We just had our military signing the other day, and she came out with me, and she's like, "Where do you want refreshments?", and I said, "Well, I'd like you to move it by the windows." She's like, "We have this countertop over here, it's really nice there." And I said, "Okay, yep, you sold me on it, okay." She goes, "Do you need a tablecloth or anything?", I said, "Nope, I got it covered." Then I go home and I start thinking about it, and I'm like, "Yeah, I really just like those, the way those windows look." So then I email her-
At what time?
We can leave that part out, in the middle of the night. Right? And I said, "You know what, let's go back to the windows." And it was always, I knew what she was saying, but she was always like, "Okay, Joe, whatever you need." And she always wanted to make sure everything was, was done right. She, I mean, taking care of a thousand lunches and breakfast, just a heart of gold. She has a, and her son can tell you, she has a very, very loud, very loud bark, but the bite, there is no fart. She has a heart of gold, and after I told her, going back to the military thing, so not only did I make her move everything back over to the win, over to the windows, then halfway through, one of the recruiters didn't have a tablecloth that we needed, and I had to go back, literally, two minutes before it began, and said, "Oh, Josie, that tablecloth I told you I didn't need, can you just provide one of those and make that happen?", as I started taking off her tablecloth and everything else. But she would always just go with the flow, and I'm gonna miss talking with both of you guys. It's all about relationships, and we talk about that all the time, and, you know, you get the job done one way or another, but it's when you can have those fun, you know, times and relationships, we can laugh about them now. Steel is losing two great individuals, so couldn't be happier for both of them, and I know Josie's looking too, she's just like MJ. I love being here, but I also love being around my grandkids and things like that. So we're going in a good direction, but these two are gonna be missed dearly, so thank you guys both for the show.
Forty-two more days.
Would either of you like to say anything?
I just, I, you know, I just want to say thank you. It has been a wonderful opportunity to work here. For those of you that don't know, my kids also went through the district. We live in Amherst, just two miles away, and they, they were just, had such a great time here when I got hired here initially at the junior high. I just loved it from day one, I loved it. I didn't like, like, all the, I loved being with the kids, let's say that. I loved, that was my favorite part, doing anything, anything that had to do with the kids, I loved it. I will really miss them a lot. Today, I had my sweater on the back of my chair, and I stood up to put it on, there was a student in there, and he said to me, "Boy, I wondered what that was. I thought it was a doily." Thinking, "It's time to go." So I'll, I'll miss them a lot, and I'll just miss everything, and I just hope it continues to be a really great school district because we're still living in the community for a while.
Thank you very much, Mary Jane. Thank you.
I would be speechless.
Well, thank you for your service as well, Josie. We appreciate it very, very much. Thank you. Thank you both. All right, and we also have with us tonight Dr. Faircloth, the superintendent of the county JBS. It's great to have you here, Dr. Faircloth, and-
It's a hard act to follow, the retirees. I got a little bitty ways to go. Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank the Amherst Board for allowing me to come out and just give you a brief presentation, provide you guys with a little goodie bag. One of the folders in there really talks about the different programs. I go over a little bit over there. I know I'd be brief, I know the port is, is going on there, so Steve, we gave him a goodie bag, you know, he's a short timer, so he has a couple of little, extra little treats in his bag, and you guys have always been a great supporter for the JBS. Joe, me and Joe both, we go back a little ways, and Board member Rex don't know this, but for many, you just always called me out there. I used to work with a group of kids out there, and every year I, we'd go out there, I'd go out there and talk with some kids that were at risk trying to do some things, so some familiar faces, so it's good to see. But just briefly, I wanted to share with you guys about the JBS. JBS was created essentially in 1971. There's 49 of us throughout the state of Ohio, and we like to consider ourselves the best, and we can prove it. You ever come into our facility, you see a gang of awards, we are the team to beat when we go to competitions across the country as well as the world. Since I've been superintendent, we had two, two of our students competed in the world, one was in Germany, and the other one was being Russian. I mean, that one, but nonetheless, that's where it went, so we're renowned. So these are some of the districts here. This is giving you some more background, we're just 100 acres under 10, under 1 world. So we're a big facility. We had to map it out in comparison to the school district there in terms of square footage. We probably equate, so probably about five to six buildings if you had to break it out, but it's good. But the different districts we have, of course, Amherst is part of this, and it's 13 of us, which we call associate school districts. Initially, when we first started in '71, there were only about seven locals that had signed on, and there were more and more have signed on to that. And out of these different school districts, as you can see, is a different variety of types of students, from rural to urban, to middle class, to lower class, but we accept them all, and we do change lives at the JBS. When you look at our high school, our high school program is essentially our meat and potatoes. Prior to my arrival, we, in 2012, we were piloting like 14 ninth grade, period, 14 sophomores. And they were doing that for seven years, but in order to grow a district and really compete with the demands of the parents, and, "Hey, I have my kid in there", we were only accepting jurors, I mean. So there's only so many slots for that. The reason why that's the case is because in Career Technical Center, well, the 49 one that I mentioned, we're one of the few that offer content area, which is the language, our science, and things of that nature. Most of them just offer the career technical field, so of course, Joe Jr. is coming here. Most of our programs in terms of the state is regulated by the 11th grade year, so you need so many clock hours or so many seat hours, and the clock begins your junior year. But in order to get that robust overall student, the ninth grader is very essential, so we push that agenda. So now we have several hundreds of freshmen, several hundreds of sophomores, so mathematically the junior will decrease because we get them young. And what we're seeing is that that ninth grade through 12th grade stays with us, because one of the problems we were having academically, 11th grader to come in and let's say, he or she was thrilled about welding, and they get in there, a license. So then we try to transfer them back out to the associate school district half of the year for the half of credit. But since it's double blocked with us, they miss some credits that they can't make up as quickly, so that became a problem with our associate school district. So the ninth graders help us grow and maintain those students, and we can do credit recovery and other things to work with those particular students so that they stay with us the entire, entire career. And one unique thing about career centers is that, once the state changed some things a few years back, all of our students will receive industry credentials. And what I mean by that is some of our students in auto tech program are ASE certified, so when you go to, like, your dealerships, you'll see that sign that say ASE. Well, our students get that training there, and our welders get a multiple, multitude of different certifications where they can tag, where they have all these particular things. And all of our programs work with industry. By law, we have what we call an advisory committee, so each of these programs may consist of dipping advisors from the real world, if you will, from those particular areas of industry. So they sit and help advise our faculty to make sure that we're doing what's out there currently. And these programs are mainly funded, not only by district funding, but they have something called Perkins Grant, and this Perkins Grant is a couple hundred thousand dollars that allows for the replenishment of different materials in these programs. But then eventually, you gotta ask that company for money because some of these big equipment starts to cost you a lot better. And out of the programs, we got 30, and you could look in your folders and see the different ones, and they range anywhere from early childhoods to comprehensive to allied health to welding, majorities, auto tech, visual repair, digital media, engineering, all particular things. Those are some of those that are there. It's about 30 of them. We also have some satellite sites at LCC where we have our project leader way appropriate there, which is more engineering based as well. And as we talked about, this ninth grade building, this ninth grade, which you guys do great, Joe brings the whole, he sends everybody out. So we rely on our recruitment. We belong to the county, so we really need to rely on that. So we send our recruits out, and then also, the school sends students there, eighth grade tour. We got different camps in the summer there to kind of intrigue them about when those on the career technical education. So these eighth graders that we do eighth grade tours, they come in, and we even bring sophomores as well, because we just took them inside our junior year. So they come in, look at our facilities, and you'd be pleasantly surprised, one of the things that transitioned from vocational education to career technical education, vocational education was this thing, "Well, we don't know what to do with these kids", well, that's sort of the vocational ad, and then people kind of turned their back to the other, it was very little secret. And then some parents who would have their kid, they would say, "Well, where'd your kid go to?", you know, they were scared to say. But over the many, many years, I bet we changed that statement, and certainly, we definitely put a dent in it. Career technical education is not of my generation or those who are older, it's not that. When you go into these lives, they are high-tech, they're very clean, and students have to regurgitate not only information that they already know, they have to really critically pay. So the paradigm has shifted a whole lot when it comes to true career technical education. Being one that had been in comprehensive schools and career tech, and you may say I'm biased, but there's no better education. Reason why I say that, because most of us go to an academic school, we read a book, take a test, star, read books, whatever it goes. But career technical education, not only do they have to read the book, they have to understand it, then they have to go out and build it. And then, for those who have done any type of repairs, when you read the direction, and you built one of those stands, and there's always a few pieces left over here, and we like to convince ourselves, "Oh, they give us extra." Not true. They don't give us extra. We list a few steps, and it all swings, it doesn't quite work out, where our students have to figure that out, and sometimes they even have to, have to build. And one quick claim to fame that the JBS had that I found out, which wasn't in my opinion, if you're a black rider, or a motorbike, there's a piece that RT has designed for Harley-Davidson, and it's on all of their bikes. Of course, we didn't get credit for it, but it's a little piece that helps out with the fuel and oil gas change. Now you look at our adult parish center, which is unique in its own, there's very few career tech centers throughout the state of Ohio that has an adult parish center. The adult parish center is quite different than a high school, obviously, because we have some cement programs in our adult ed, but we also able to do customized training. So for example, you work for an organization and you want to train, you know, a large group on a certain type of practice, well, we can come out and help, or we can bring them in and help. But currently, one of our strongest programs in our adult ed is our ADP program. The ADP stands for Adult Diploma Program. A few years ago, the state came out and said, "Okay, let's do something." Because you had all these people from 18, or even younger, but definitely from 18 to, say, 26, they were just out there. And the state knew about that because when we went back to the old Ohio graduation test, and you went to the proficiency test, this data was out there where these kids, at the time, because the pass was passed, or they crossed out on us, or whatever, so they were just out there. So the GD program kind of was like, "I don't want a GD." So what they did was they created an adult diploma, so these young adults can come through programs and get a high school diploma, as well as get an industry credential in some of the fields, i.e. welding, or in our manufacturing trade. And then we constantly add the new programs as the demand is there. But one of our strongest programs there outside of that is our comprehensive program. Uh, but one of our strongest programs there outside of that is our comprehensive program. And we also have dental tech program on the adult, adult ed side that are, that are very strong. And these are some of the other ones that we have as well. Our welding piece, uh, was very strong. But then we came into COVID, we lost instructors, so we've really been trying to find a good welding instructor. And so if you know one, it's a shame, but we hired for that position. We need a MSA, uh, so it's very strong for us. But in a nutshell, that's our school. We have, with thirteen associate school districts, we have thirteen boards, uh, from different walks of life. And not all our board members sit on a local school board. Uh, the, the law has changed, so what they want is someone that, uh, that can be appointed from that city with someone that, uh, knew about business, knew about industries and things of that nature. And we have two, two of those on our board. He's there and, uh, Rex is one of my bosses as well. He also hired me, he's on the hiring team. So I've been here almost ten years, maybe ten years, so they haven't fired me yet, so. Probably been close a few times as well. But, you know, we're still here, but, uh, I will tell you, we have had, over these ten years, we have tremendous amount of growth. Our stu-, our enrollment is up. Um, we actually looking at adding more programs there as we want to begin to change some of the programs, some of the ones that are releasing refreshments. So we looking at some of those particular things, es- especially as society has evolved and some more different things, either from danger to revise, all these particular things. And we have a lot of, uh, programs that can really be a springboard for some of those. Next year, our enrollment there, we, we actually have a waiting list. And the only reason why we have waiting list is because we have to reason, figure some spaces out. We have, we still have space, but some of these rooms are, have been big and used as storage, so we gotta do some things with that nature. But, uh, we're really happy, uh, with our enrollment, with our success rates. Uh, when we had a report card, uh, before the last report card that we had, I think we got all A's and B's. So we're really doing some strong things academically. And, uh, and we in this together. Our students are, you got students and vice versa. So please continue to look at us as a partner and, uh, and we simply are an extension of all thirteen school districts. So I thank you guys for your time. You got any questions?
Neat, asked all your questions. Could you just address, uh, I know that they ask on a regular basis about the levy that we are, so I'm giving you a follow-up. Could you just give a brief update on that?
Yes, sir. Um, the Rain County JBS has been operating on the same millet rate, uh, since the eighties. And that millet rate fluctuated due to housing. So that number is not the same, but it's the same number. Uh, and that's simply with inflation and those things, who can keep up? And to be a career technical center who has not had any major changes since nineteen seventy-one, we have some issue. As I mentioned, we have Perkins Grant, but that's really to kind of supplant some things. But when you talk about CNC machine, uh, you're talking about a welding lab, you started talking about millions of dollars. And having that conversation with the community is a little bit different because most community folks went to comprehensive school districts like this. So they'd say, no way, one classroom can be two million dollars, for example. Because we looked at tables, chairs, maybe some, some whiteboards or, or smartboards and those particular things. And I, and I understand it because most of them, that was our experience. But not only when we replaced, so we had to, if you ever building thing and let's say you did it in the eighties, once you bust open that wall, everything bad has now be brought up to code. So that's where that finally comes in. So for example, the JBS, we were able to renovate our lower level and part of our upper level, uh, and not even all of our lower level. So we have, uh, fire suppression system, a sprinkler system, a language service there. But over ninety-seven percent of the building is now. And imagine this, we have culinary, we have welding, we have, uh, machinery. These are things that create sparks, is what I'm gathering. Certainly we have, uh, fire extinguishers and those particular things we do, but really we didn't have that. And that's a conundrum because you have to bring water through the street. So when you bring up the street and we have a terrible parking lot design and parts of our parking lots are, are closed. We really, we literally have to broke down. We can't patch them anymore. They have to be redone. So once you run the line, you're gonna dig up the chute. So you might as well do the configuration for the front of the building and the parking lots. And then once you get in, you run it through the ceiling. We have older ceiling tiles and these towels can't be bought anymore. Kind of long, odd shaped. So you have to run through the ceiling. So once you run into a ceiling, you might as well change out the grid and all that. So it's just dominant of that. So when we priced that out, uh, COVID, I'm thinking, what, four years now? That alone was almost four to five and a half million dollars. And I, and I understand you guys done a small project in that double, right? So imagine just that one. Collectively, we looked at all the repairs, we did a, a somewhat assessment. At that time, prior to, we was looking at, uh, about forty million dollars. And that's been a few years ago. So we're gonna do another assessment so we can be able to tell the taxpayers what that number looks, so we can get a, a great number of what ma- mileage, uh, military needs. So, um, and maybe we slip the shot. As we all, uh, have experienced that with our personal lives, everything's almost doubled. So we'll, we'll see. And that's really some of our needs is really is changing to make sure that we're gonna be the county's career tech center. Not only we need to step it up, we need to look the part, we need to be the part. And, you know, one of my biggest tasks that I have is that our industry folks really wrap their hands around. When you go to other career technical centers throughout the state, depending on where they located, the industry folks wrap their hands around and they run. We need to visit office and put it on the board. But those industries come out and they, they pony up the money, they doing that because they had, uh, they selfishly need that. We get calls every day, we weld, we weld, we need auto tech, uh, technician, we need this or that. We can do all of those. But it makes sense to have loose stuff that's modern. So that way, when you get them, you don't have to retrain them. So you save money on the back end, retrained for free. So it's, it's a big ask, but we're part of all of you guys. And if we look bad, we all look bad. And one thing, uh, that I believe in is the backbone of the workers of the community. We make it. Just like, uh, these folks two years saying, we're gonna stay in the three for a while and they want to break schools. And everything's attached to that and should be great. So and that's kind of the predicament we are in, uh, is that ask. It looks quite different from most school districts. But it's small because with thirteen cities, essentially, they pay a small part of that. So for example, when we went out a few years ago, we're thinking it's like, uh, what, uh, a dollar or something for a hundred thousand dollar loan, help on hold. At, at that time, of course, that changed. So it's very cheap overall because we get so many of them. So, you know, in their future, we, uh, or we will talk about that, get all the numbers and figure out what's good time. Because the, the need did go away. And the more students you come in, and our students deserve it. You know, we still have, this is a nice room, but we still have carpet on some walls. I guess they used it back in the day for cruise sticks. We got a lot of, uh, galvanized piping throughout the building. So some of our faucets there, you got a little, little spring that's coming out there. So, but I tell you what, our maintenance crew there, and they've been praised not just by me, and I'm not just saying it because that's generally what we do. We praise our staff, they work very hard. But we have had folks come out and assess stuff and they like, hey, I don't know how this is going. You guys are a great maintenance crew and we do. We have some great guys and little girls there. And our instructors are, are top tier. And, and like I said, when I started this presentation, we had proof. We have trophies, we have a certificate. But we, we're, we're the team. We're not like the Browns, you know, we check the box with Browns, that's a, that's a win for your team to play them. But we all was like patriots of, of this game. You know, we're gonna give you a lot of static and then probably come out and tell you.
Thank you. Any other questions to our prepared folks? He is supposed to be going to all thirteen school districts to give that presentation. I do believe that Amherst is the first presentation.
Yes, they're the first presentation, yep.
Because we try to set the standard at JBS as well, even though we have more of a challenge sometimes to make that happen with all thirteen. So I appreciate you taking the time for this evening to come and share the JBS story with the Amherst board.
No problem. Like I said, you, you guys are great, you know, Joe, he, he brings, brings them out there and, and our counselors, they work well together and stuff. So, uh, I appreciate you guys. And, and I'm not just saying that we, to be, be afraid, we don't get that from all the schools. But they, they look at us competition when we're not, we, we part of you guys. Don't fight with your teammate, you know, so. But thank you guys and I appreciate your time.
Get out your hair, go out, do your thing. Nice.
I don't believe anyone has signed up for hearing.
That's correct.
So we have, we move on to, I have six to my seven. Before we do that, I do have, I do have something from the public that was emailed. So I'm just going to share it. However, I can't tell you who it is because it is a anonymous concern of parent. And I'm going to share it to everyone so that everyone is aware that as we see this Friday afternoon, um, they have a concern about the Amherst Board of Education Facebook page. And, um, I know it's the last thing you probably want to hear today, but do you think this great page is appropriate? I'm concerned about some of the actions of our new board members unless they're representing the entire board here on this Facebook page. I don't think they should be using the title Amherst Board of Education and posting it on the information network. Furthermore, since when do any certain members of the board have a social media presence under their name? Lastly, the fact that two board members are members of obvious Facebook pages that don't like the schools. We have unsettling feeling about that. I have seen some of the posts in that group and the posts are quite frankly, very disturbing. I'm very concerned, parent. Thank you for your attention. I've had two other people call me about the Amherst Facebook page that is out there because it, we purposely hired someone to post on behalf of the school district. So I think that it is a concern that we probably should address as a board. And since it came from the public, I brought it up to you as it came from the public. So we can certainly have a discussion about that, um, and make a decision from that. We know that we are not supposed to have individual Facebook page concerning school information. In this case, there are two of you and I, we had, I don't know what prompts you to do that other than do you think that you're informing the public, which you are. But I think everything that you share for the most part is already on the Amherst School Facebook page or in some social media. So let's discuss this briefly as a board member, board member and decide if we want to let this continue or if we think that it's in the best interest of the schools. Because I think legal has advised that we shouldn't have that page to an extent as well. So what are your thoughts?
Well, since I'm here for those people, I'll share my thoughts. So, um, we do get a lot of positive feedback from people who pay for that C-Bus or, you know, things from horny, things from transparent. Uh, so from that standpoint, there's suicide, there's issue. If there is a legal precedent to you not doing it, then I would vote legal.
Well, we will confirm that, but that was the general consensus from what we heard, learned, I think in June. That you can have your own Facebook page and put anything and do what you want to put on. But when you put something out about the school board, you're really representing the entire school.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's that you have the page. I think it's that you renamed it and the name says Amherst School Board. So people think that's the Amherst School Board page and it's not.
See, I think you did rename the page because originally it's a short page, right? Yeah, so I think that when you tied it to the Amherst Board of Education, that's when it becomes an issue. Okay? If it's just your two names or three names or five names, your Harley names, what beyond here, I think that that alleviates any liability from this Board of Education. Anyone have any thoughts on that?
I, I actually also got an email.
Well, I,
I did too.
That's my job, is to bring that stuff to everyone's attention.
I, I got one too, somebody that was very upset that there was, that.
And I don't know whether, I don't know if it's the same person or not, because like I said, it was a concerned person. But I've had two phone calls as well who asked not, for me not to share their names from that perspective. So I'm just bringing it out there so that everybody's aware that there's a buzz about it. Okay? So I, I would strongly suggest that you go back to just using your names and removing the Amherst Board of Education to that from that perspective.
I think my only thought on that, I am, that's fine to do that. My only thought is knowing that we are on board, I think the same members will have the same opinion that two board members, regardless of the type of company, would be sharing information is that, that does it affect anything if we change the name of that?
Well, I think it does affect it. Because if there would be some kind of liberal ramifications.
Oh, equally definitely.
Yeah, so I think that it will, I mean, there will always be naysayers, absolutely. But I think that as long as they know that it's just coming from whoever's on that page or administrators of that page versus what's on the school page, I think that's a whole, a whole different thing. Because in true, in true, the Amherst Board of Education does not have a Facebook page. We do not have a Facebook page. Amherst Schools has a Facebook page, but we the Board of Education do not have a Facebook page. We never have. And if we choose to do that, then we can have a discussion about that from that perspective. But we've never had a Facebook page.
I don't, I honestly don't see the need to have a page for us because it wouldn't, the school does. And that's just not getting that.
Oh, that's why we're doing this discussion.
The only other point I have, um, there is the, and maybe it's just a campaign page, but I still see posts on there, it's one of the friends of neither.
It's just, yeah, but it has a name. It doesn't say anything about Board of Education on there at all.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that.
So I think if you guys would have ever changed your name, I think it would, it wouldn't be a problem.
I would agree.
I think we still have the same comments. So we still made a post saying whatever it said to speak. I think the same people who are upset during the campaign would have still said, well, is this your opinion or is this going to, or does it say, has it say? We cannot speak for the board, but we are speaking on behalf of the school.
I, I think you actually were a more than part of it.
I, I thought that we discussed this during, during board training, that, um, there would be no need to repost things because things are already posted. We post board meetings. Um, the first time this happened, I think it was the organizational meeting. Everyone is welcome, the entire public is welcome. Most interested parties know that they can find anything, um, about board meetings, notices, agenda, policy, et cetera, on the amherst, um, schools dot board website. I think from a stand, a legality standpoint, of course, as Mr. Rank Endel says, we'll have to verify that. But I don't think that there would be any need for any one or two or five board members to, um, repeat what's already been said elsewhere.
But does it form anything to repeat it?
No, it's the fact that you, you, when people see that page, they think it's all of us and it's not all of us.
I'm just saying, and I agree with the change in opinion, I'm just saying, is there, um, negative effect to resharing information?
I think if you, I, my personal opinion, I think is if you share the exact same post and not make up your own post, then that it's, it's okay. But when you're recreating it and there's errors within your, in your message, it makes us all not look good.
I also think it was mentioned that, that the original Facebook page was, um, a negative perspective of the district. And for that reason, I think that it may not be appropriate.
And if you want me to, I can make sure the other page is on.
Can I answer your question? Why do you feel that you, you?
This one we have, I mean, I just asked him, so I don't know, but.
We're sharing, we share a lot of other different ends as well, not just, it's not a verification.
We share from all the different school pages on the one. We're sharing some multiple locations. It's just more transparency and trying to get information out to people than anything else. And I know that it's been mentioned that some field was in a negative influence situation. I don't, I feel like it, what the negativity was from both sides because that's a campaign. And I think it was never, no one's name was ever mentioned direct. We've never said anything. I can still be here. I'm here. Like, I love this school, so I'm not going to say discouraging things about it. If I said anything, it was just a, here's my thing to be better.
I just, I think if you change your.
I can also add too that, Mr. Engel, if there's anything ever that the board would like us to post on our district Facebook page, I think it would be appropriate that that would go through the president and certainly, you know, if there's something that the board feels should be communicated to the public, absolutely, we can do that through our district Facebook page. That avenue is obviously theirs.
And I think that we want more people to follow the school districts Facebook page. You want to brand it as the district, not as the people. And I think that's important. I mean, that's how I've always known even for Main Street. We want to brand Main Street, not all the businesses. I mean, of course, we support all the businesses, but we have to have our own branding. And if we're sending people somewhere else to read stuff, we need to train them to go to the right place to read the stuff, whether it's the website or our Facebook page or Instagram page, whatever we have, YouTube. I'm not going any further than that because I would. I just think it's important to brand yourselves.
So I agree that I think that if we just, if we just go back to whatever you'd like to call it, participate in the Board of Education on the Amherst Board of Education page because I think that's what it says now. Is that correct? That's what this lady says and people can call and says, why does? And the other question was, there's only a couple of people that have posted. And I said, well, I don't even know about the page because I see it pop up. I've not seen it.
I only see what pops up.
In the beginning, when we were on, I did mention at one point making a board Facebook page and it was just decided, well, we don't need that. We already have this one page. I'll just continue to bring.
So if you just take the Board of Education off of it, I don't think there's going to be any problems. Okay? All right. Thank you for allowing me to share that public information as part of the public. Now we're ready for the matter.
Good evening. I will not provide a financial update this evening because the five year forecast will be presented at the Thursday, May 26th, Special Board Meeting, 7:00 AM. I did want to let you know that there's a couple of things going on in the Treasurer's Office of Interest. Our newest employee, our Hannah Watkin, that provides records and benefit services to the district, has completed essentially payroll training. So now our payroll specialist has a fully trained backup, which she's never really had. So this is exciting and it's appropriate for segregation of duties and internal controls and all of that. So exciting for me.
We're excited for you.
Thank you.
This next one is even better. The fiscal '21 financial audit is done. Crowd goes wild, right? Anyways, it's done. However, the results of the financial audit are confidential until the auditor or state office releases it. It is to be released either on Thursday, May 19th or Tuesday, May 24th. So be ready with your fingers poised down the mouse to go out and search the audit. Good things are coming though. What I can say is that we, we run a really clean ship here in the district and I'm very proud of that. So that's all I have with an update this evening. Would you like me to move on to the recommendation? Okay. So this evening, we have, the board is being requested to approve the board meeting minutes from the regular April 18th meeting and also the May 2nd Special Board Meeting. Item B, which you see each month, are prior month's financials. It was a tight, tight race to get April's financials completed and all of that for the May 9th meeting. Exhibit A is the financial summary. And I have recently just sent you all a PowerPoint presentation that was provided to Dr. Messer and Mrs. Wackels explaining what each of these reports need and the prior month's financials. Also the financial summary, the cash reconciliation, the forecast line item reports for Fund 001 and 016, the emergency levy, and then 8D is the checklist thing. Item C, our supplemental appropriations for the month of May. The only appropriation change is a $10,000 increase for athletics, Fund 300. Item D, our revised medical and dental rates for the 2022-2023 school year. Just so you know, our health insurance, same provider, Medical Mutual. We belong to the Lake Year Regional Council of Governments Consortium for Medical. And we had a nine and a half percent renewal increase. That's greater than what we've had in some years. Medical inflation is outpacing inflation. So not a surprise, healthcare inflation and greater usage, greater utilization are driving higher renewal rates. Our dental, just FYI, we were requested about two years ago that we adopt Lake Year Regional Council of Governments Dental Plan. So we are moving from Cigna to Delta Dental on July 1st. Very, very similar plan, similar benefits for the employees with a slight reduced premium. You may have heard things in the community. Of course, we would have a lot of employees that frequent local dentist, dental offices. So there's that. And then item P, this is something that the board only sees one time a year and it is the transfer from the permanent improvement fund to the maintenance fund, the O34 fund. The O34 fund was created when we passed the levy, the bond levy, the most recent one, our most recent bond levy for Powers Elementary. With any co-funded project with the facilities construction commission, we are required to either, the co-owner of the district is required to either move one half mil from the permanent improvement levy each year or pass a new half mil levy. We didn't need to do that. We had the existing permanent improvement levy. So our Seth valuation now has increased to over $700 million. So the value of one half of a mil is greater $52,000. And all transfers must be re-approved. And then we have a final item of a donation from Mr. Jim Zilch.
Do you have a motion? Any questions or discussion for the Treasurer on items A, 8A through F?
Thanks for explaining.
Hearing none, please call the rule.
Mrs. Gellis?
Aye.
Mr. Zappel?
Aye.
Dr. Messer?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels? Mr. Engel?
Aye.
Superintendent, two points you say?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Engel. Just three quick items. First of all, I wanted to once again say thank you to our community for their overwhelming support of issues 1 and 2 last Tuesday with the primary election. It certainly just a great, great feeling. Obviously, many folks were involved in making that happen. But just so thankful and grateful for our community's support. When you consider the margin of victory is especially significant with all that's happening, you know, with inflation and gas prices and all those kinds of things. To have those two issues passed by the margin that they did really says something special about our community. So it's a good thing. We can count on issue one to provide revenue for the next five years. And we can count on issue two to provide revenue for us for the next 10 years. And it ensures that we will have financial stability for the foreseeable future. It's hard to predict exactly how many years we'll have financial stability for only because there are so many variables that are beyond our control. Obviously, things like inflation. Are we going to have 8% inflation, you know, for the next three, four, five years? Or is it going to come back down? You know, those are all, again, all variables that we just don't have control over. Fuel prices is another one. And state funding. State funding actually makes up almost half of our revenue and that revenue source is ultimately beyond our control as well. So there are some variables involved, but suffice, suffice it to say, based on what we do know right now, these two renew, I mean, to really secure our financial position and, you know, create an ongoing stability, again, for the foreseeable future. So just again, wanted to say thank you to your community. Just a great, great feeling. And then the last two items were just basically reminders. Tomorrow night is our senior awards program at German's Villa, always a very special evening. And just a great, great time recognizing our graduating seniors for various accomplishments and scholarships and those kinds of things. And then the last item was a reminder that Comespride is now less than two weeks away. Saturday, May the 21st, and we were able to get the 10:00 AM slot, which I know has proved to be very popular with everyone, that we finish up for lunch and families have the rest of the day. So we have that. And I know once we get more information about parking and, you know, what time you should be there and all those kinds of things, once we get that from the high school, we will certainly share that with you over the next week or so. And that completes our report. Thank you.
And the awards banquet is at 6:00. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Any questions or comments? Anything for Steve? If not, we will move on to the Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Okay. Two quick personnel items and then one for update item. The first personnel I want to highlight is Sunday Jenna tonight. And it's item 11D. Just want to point out, you can't be here tonight, but Vincent Seala is going to be our new junior high director of bands. Not only is he going to teach 678th grade band junior high, as well as two general music classes, he's also going to be the new assistant band director. One of the things we were looking for is to have someone come not only be the band teacher, but also work with Mr. Barbaro, continue that excellent band tradition that we have. And I wanted to mention Vincent because again, he couldn't be here tonight at the concert, but he currently right now is the director, high school director of bands at Brexford, Brody Heights. He was formerly that in Streetsboro as well. Actually has a great background in band. Both his parents were band directors. I think his mom was a band director of Koffley. His father was a band director when he died. Mr. Barbaro knows, his family has worked with his father in the past. So I don't want to be so happy about another district misfortune, but. But French field of Brody Heights does have some, I think, financial issues. And anyway, they have a couple of teachers, I think, two and a half or three in the music program. And since Vince just got there two years ago from Streetsboro, I mean, he's just, that's how we're short because we're those kind of people. So good luck to Brexford, Brody Heights. Misfortune for them, but we will gladly take Vince on our team. And Chris, we're all excited. He's phenomenal and I just look forward to Vince working with Chris, maybe helping the program bring some fresh ideas, taking some things off Chris's plate even. I mean, it's going to be a great thing. I think we're all excited. So I'm happy about that. The second personnel item I want to point out is here with us tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Principal Jill Tyer to introduce our other staff over here tonight.
Absolutely. So speaking of other districts, Miss Ford, Jen. I can speak firsthand. Superintendent, curriculum directors, teachers, principals are pretty upset with Amherst Schools for taking Denise Abbott from them. Obviously, you guys know Ashley Harrigan is going to Nord to become the principal. And so our assistant principal to join Nick Tony and Casey Wolf, our administrative team, is Denise Abbott. She comes with us. We have 10 years of a lot of special ed background. She was on the building and district level teams at Elyria. So that's how a lot of teachers, and the more we get to talking, it's a small world, have talked with dozens of people and just not a, nothing but glowing from Denise. So we're, we're very excited. And I think it's interesting. I'll just take you through the process real quick. We had 48 applications. And from there, we screened probably 15 or 16. And then from there, I called a full round table, we brought in custodians, secretaries, teachers, counselors, central office. We had a, it was a pretty grueling, intimidating.
It was a big team.
Really like a horseshoe like you have. And we're like, Denise, you get to sit here and here, here's a bottle of water. And I can tell you, every teacher, every custodian, every secretary, every administrator, she was our number one choice. And we all just said, you know, everybody has a credentials. Everybody's certified to be a principal. But who can we see working with the kids of Amherst? And all of her answers kept circling back to relationships and getting to know people. And she really just separated herself from all the very qualified applicants. And a little fun fact before I turn it over to her, she wants to say things, something. I think what we all kind of thought, well, that was an interesting, we loved all of our answers. But we also said, what an interesting thing. She has been in all 50 states. And I don't know that I've met anybody who can say that. So.
Most of them are my daughter.
And I will say before turning it over, her husband was here with their son and they had baseball practice. So made the attempt to come and got to see all of us, but he did have to leave. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Denise and Steel High School and the district. We are in a good spot with her. We have a real good individual here.
I just want to say I'm very excited and thankful. I feel really blessed for this opportunity and just really look forward to growing my career here. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Denise.
All right. The last time actually is a board, I believe, a few weeks ago, a few months ago, actually, we had our girls and pals and all in our experiences group committee, a phenomenal job presenting for a phenomenal year to bring new programs against Sarah Walker and her team. And then Rex had asked if we could possibly look for some support outside of the community support program, specifically our Amherst Roadgrade Club, which Stephen had members of. And so on Monday, Sarah and her team, Monday, 16th coming up, they're going to present at our local Roadgrade Club and they already, as a board, that we're giving $500 toward supporting the program for next school year. And we're going to be looking for continued support from them. And hopefully, the more money we can raise, the more it's like a big part of the experience. So we're just going to keep pushing. And again, since phenomenal.
And we'll keep asking.
Yeah, I know. So we're just so happy about that. I think Sarah's going to continue to update about something else with the Rock Program as well. So I just want to give a board update on that. So I think it's a great idea. It's working out pretty. That concludes my report. Sarah, we'll go right.
Wish that goes right into my report. Lot of things going on in the student services world. First thing I want to talk about though is thank you for your support for our 2122 parent nights that we had this year. We had our first ever summer activity fair in April and I think we could call it a success. We had almost 40 vendors there. The library told me that they had brought 200 flyers and that they had already gone through all of them and needed some extra copies made. So we had over 200 people at the event coming through. Vendors were real positive. One actually told Mary Scott as she was, you know, getting some feedback from them, like, this is the first time you guys have ever done this. And we were like, yeah, how did we do? And they were like, we would have never guessed it was the first time. So we were told, they were totally on board for doing it again next year. We also had at that event, our social workers were distributing their comic here. They've been accepting donations and gently used comic here from families who, their kids or the adults about grown and here that they had. And they were able to provide 23 shirts to adults and 67 kids walked out with new Amherst shirts. So that's a really cool thing that was kind of an addition to that we were able to provide. We also had, I was very grateful for Mercy and Urban Del Valle from the social work with Mercy Hospital. They did our, they did. work with Mercy Hospital, they did our, they did a presentation last week, which was on the Comics Live. Um, and I'm planning on in the coming week to send out a, another community survey so we can start soliciting feedback for, um, what topics we want pulled together for next year, so that we can keep this momentum going. Um, other things going on, tomorrow, Amherst is hosting a unified track meet at the high school. I believe there are four other districts that are participating, and what that program is, it's a Special Olympics affiliate program where you have students with special needs competing right against their peers, um, athletes who are not in season, um, running track and field events. And so we'll be doing that all day tomorrow, should be a lot of fun. And then Friday is the county Special Olympics event that Elyria hosts, and that's always, you, you never have a bad day on Special Olympics Day, always, always a good time. And then Saturday, pigbacking off of what, um, Mike was talking about with our, our rocks program, President Engel has invited us to the district rotary event, and so we will be there, um, presenting at a, uh, exhibition table to tell other districts kind of why they should be participating in this program. And Mary Scott Williams and Chandler Kramer, who are two of our school counselors, will be there. They're putting together a nice display that will have, um, testimonies from the girls as far as what, um, rocks have meant to them, to share topics that they've covered as, uh, as well as future plans. So they're really excited to come and share that, so thank you for that.
Sure, and just to follow up on that, with Lisa, Dr. ...
Ingleman?
Ingleman is actually addressing the crowd.
Yes.
So she will be there, um, addressing the crowd, talking about the girls program. And it's my goal to have Sarah become the spokesperson, even though she's not the rotarian, but the other one over here. Uh, since he's the opposite sex, I think it's better that we have Sarah as the spokesperson.
I look better in pink than my taller.
But my goal is to have the program grow through all of the districts, and that's why I encourage the Amherst Rotary to support it, so that they can say that they could go to their local rotary clubs in their districts, because there are 64 districts in District 6600, which is what Amherst is part of, and start this program. And I thought that the great, a good resource for that, especially for local communities here, I don't think they're going to send a line home, but, you know, but I thought that was a good thing to do, and I think when they hear some of these programs, that there's potential that we could make this a district point thing. Uh, because one of the focuses this year on rotary was to empower women and girls. And, um, the speaker who's speaking Friday night is talking about empowerment of women, because she's a woman as well, about how rotary has changed her life, because she's been a slalom and some of those things. So it's coming together very nicely, and I, so I thank Steve and Mike for pointing to rotary, I thank Sarah for introducing me, and, you know, it was a long shot that I thought that I would get Lisa there, but she's there, uh, she's here for two nights.
She's dynamic.
So, um, she's going to be giving about a 45 minute presentation at lunch, and it should be a good event as well.
Yes.
Good stuff, okay?
Yeah, very much. Thank you.
I don't have any presentations tonight from the table. If you have questions, you should have gotten the answers already. I do have, uh, one question, though, for Sarah, and Mike. I don't remember who I put in charge of the Crystal Bible Award, but the other one could assist. I don't know whether it was Michael or whether it was Sarah, because I didn't go back and look at my notes, but could you give us an update where we stand?
Yes, Steve and I talked, we're going to, we're going to, because yours is social, whatever, put it out there for staff, and then look to collect everything for everyone to say have enough time, and I feel like, I don't have time, I'm going to fill out. Enough time that we can collect everything and do something in August, we all will turn.
That's fine. Yeah, I, I meant to ask last month, and I forgot to do that, and I just, let me just ask where that stays, but I think that's fine, I think that's a good, probably all.
We think there's a lot of enthusiasm around the beginning of the school year, and this gives plenty of time for folks to nominate volunteers and so forth, and then we, you know, it gives us time to put that together and come back in August, and it should be a nice, uh, nice recognition at a...
And also be an incentive for everyone to volunteer.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so I just wanted to follow up where that was. Um, I don't think there's any other standing committee reports, I would just like to, to thank the community, uh, the staff, the administration, everyone who had a hand in, uh, making the campaign successfully was, uh, your posts and your thoughts, as you were standing in the rain, and some people's umbrellas were subtracting, other people had to go home because it was raining. And, you know, it was quite, it was very inspiring to see that the faculty and the staff and all the administration, uh, was involved in that. And so kudos to the entire group, but most kudos go to the citizens who strongly believe in the Amherst School District, and I, that Amherst School District. And I thank them, um, on behalf of the board, for their support, because we couldn't be what we are without the support of the community. And as we sent 110,000 miles, as goes the schools, goes the community. So let's just keep that in mind as we look forward, especially since we're getting ready to wrap up here and celebrate all the exciting things of the end of the school year. We move on then to item number 11, personnel recommendations.
Yes, we have a number of items here, uh, in the personnel section. Uh, I know the board has had an opportunity to review all of these agenda items, uh, some new hires, some contracts, uh, for support staff as we plan for next year. Uh, again, I know you've had an opportunity to look at these, I would like to highlight item E, as that is the recommendation Denise must have had to step on. Oh, okay. Well, uh, item E is recommendation to employ Denise as our new assistant principal here at Steel High School, so that certainly is a wonderful thing, and glad she was able to be with us this evening. And with that, would like to recommend approval of items 11A through 11Q.
We have a motion in a second, please. Second, from 11A through Q. Questions or comments on any of those items? Hearing or seeing none, please call the board.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
All right.
Mr. Ingle.
All right. Educational recommendations under 12A?
Yes, uh, thank you. Again, just, uh, I wanted to highlight a couple of items. Item A there is an updated school calendar. As you may recall, we originally approved the dates for the school calendar as far as when the year starts and ends, Christmas vacation, spring vacation, all those kinds of things. Uh, but this updated version, uh, actually includes parent conference, uh, dates and times, uh, open house dates, orientations, those kinds of things. So I did want to offer that clarification. And then also item F is a number of policies, and I did want to mention that these policies have been reviewed, uh, by our policy committee, uh, Mr. Zappa, Mr. Ingle, uh, have looked through these and given their endorsement to be included on the agenda. And again, I will say, uh, we're so thankful, um, for Neola and the policy service that they provide, and the opportunity to meet twice a year to make sure our policies are updated and current. And we'd like to recommend at this time items 12A through 12I.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any questions or concerns?
I do, I do have a policy, but it, it's going to be kind of a long one.
No, you can go right now.
So, um, everybody knows I love reading the policy, so, um, well, there's two policies, and, uh, Steve and I, um, talked briefly, so thank you for that, on, on those. So I kind of wrote it out so that I wouldn't mess up what I'm going to say. So, we need to do, uh, well, the one policy allowed the, uh, first pill or anything like that, so, um, talking about hairstyles and things like that. So my comment is, and I'm going to read it, so I'm clear, we should consider revisiting the language of this policy. While the legal verbiage has been vetted as it is currently written, this policy can be open to interpretation as to why it is being enforced. My recommendation is to add more specific clarifying verbiage, as this will support those who are subject to the policy to feel it is applied clearly and fairly while protecting our administrators in the district by removing as much interpretation as possible. So as we've seen in the new cycle, past few years, you know, private entities and schools kind of get in trouble with some of these policies, talking about hairstyles and other things that can be interpreted certain ways, so I would recommend that we kind of look and go to, to make sure that we're, because as it's written, things can be open to interpretation, and they're produced in culturalized and stuff like that.
What, what I would recommend at this point, uh, and, and thank you very much for sharing, we exchanged emails earlier today, and typically what we do is we, we defer to the language that Neola provides, because it has been developed by attorneys. Actually, our attorney, uh, John Burton, his firm are actually very much involved in the development of the policy. So typically, you know, we defer to that. However, what we could do is, is we are looking to prepare for our student handbooks, because typically our student handbooks, uh, our, uh, our parents and students obviously look for, you know, guidelines and regulations and so forth as it relates to various issues. Uh, we could have those reviewed specifically by our legal counsel, uh, to make sure those are, those are in, you know, word correctly in our student handbooks. That would be my thought.
It is more so, but I did see it's been a one in that one, seemed pretty clear, I didn't see any concerning language on that one, but the two involving, like, employees of this sort of importance, those were the two that it kind of, it was written.
Well, I think we can look at that as well, because I think that we're going to be in the process of developing a handbook, I think, uh, from the, from the district we talked about, which then we could clarify exactly what our expectations would be, so that you could refer to what the handbook could say to the teachers or to the staff, administration, everyone, uh, so that then the interpretation, it's vague in the actual policy, is then defined in the handbook, which is exactly, I think, what legal would go to. She would say, here's the generic school policy, here's how it's going to be defined at the handbook per specifics, but we can confirm that as well.
So precedent is the world of generalities in this policy that the handbook we create...
Is what, is specific. So then the general policy is this, and then that would be open into for interpretation by any legal, okay? But then our legal would have what we would really, what our thoughts are what should really be in the script or per building, you know, from that perspective, would be defined there, okay? So that then if there was a case, then here's what our attorney would be defending, the big policy that we just, we defined that big policy by these guidelines. So therefore, the opposing would have to counter that they didn't adhere to what the document is handling.
So the end with that, I guess when it's this handbook, we...
Well, we don't have it right now, so we're in the process of, of developing that, and our goal would be to have that ready by the time this...
I believe, Janet, I think our handbooks were tentatively planning to bring before the board at their June board meeting.
Yes, the building.
Yeah, the building, yes, absolutely, yes. So we can certainly get that interpreted, so that we could see that from that perspective, and make sure that it's clear, based on the two of the items that you have brought up here.
Yeah, now it suggests, like, you have to bring people looking at it as well, so legally it's not great, but how it looks to many people may not, you know, maybe interpret it differently, so just trying to...
Well, sure, and I, and I'm confident that you have some thoughts on what that should need or what it should look like?
Yes. Maybe, but I don't, I don't speak for every, you know...
Right, I'm just saying, but you could give us one perspective of that, so if you could just shoot an email to Mark.
Mark?
Yeah, Mark's on it.
He's on the committee, so he's doing a lot of that work.
Okay, so that if you do that, and then we can also reach out and get some other ideas, so that then we can share that with John Britain, who then will help us develop a legal, okay? Is that fair?
Does our, like, district handbook, like we mentioned in our original training?
I think that was our goal, yes.
Well, that would be a board, a board is, I, I was speaking, I'm sorry, I was speaking to the students.
The student handbook is what she's speaking to, from that perspective, so that it's defined, because each school can have a different interpretation of that.
Each school has its own handbook, that's correct.
Is there, there's an employee handbook, too, though, right? Because these policies are turning much worse than the two that I, that I read.
Well, yes, they are, but there, there is no board handbook at this present time.
She's talking about employee.
Oh, yeah, there's an employee handbook as well.
Yeah, much of it is included in the collective bar...
In the verbiage. So a lot of it would be in there, but if there's, you know, we can't, shouldn't say we can't, it's never been done, we put it in the bargain contract, maybe, dress code or anything, that's, that would be a separate page, if you are separate to that. A lot of those things is in the contract, it's negotiated, okay?
The employee, the, a lot of the rules and regulations regarding employee is in the contract.
That's correct.
It is negotiated, that's from that perspective, okay? And we absolutely can work out board handbook.
A board is, yes.
Separate outlines what the whole district is about.
That's correct.
That's what is off from the reading.
Right, especially if there was someone doing that, or if we had to, something to get that ball, which isn't a competition.
Correct, yes, okay, but yes. So we will get the input, get that to Mark, Mark will solicit some other inputs from different demographics, and then we will share that so that it can be done, okay? Because Steve is aware specifically of what you've talked about, I think, as well, so we can talk about that in that respect, okay?
I was kind of wishing I went with a board or not, because my question's nothing like that.
Do you have anything else?
Uh, in terms of policy, no.
You're good with that?
Yes.
Teresa?
This is just, this isn't easy. I just wanted you to explain, so people in the community understand why we have Easter break, well, spring break, why don't we have it by Easter? We could, I know why, but can you explain why?
Yes, we, typically what we've done, uh, in our district, again, typically, is that we, um, tend to take our spring break late March, first week of April at the latest, simply because, um, what we hear from staff and families is, that's when everybody needs a break. And, and sometimes that aligns with Easter, and sometimes it does not. And, and so for example, if, you know, you may get that year where it, it works with Easter, and then there's other years where Easter is later in April, like this year, I wanted to say we were the third week in March, and then we had the three-day weekend with, with Easter. So again, every district does it differently, uh, some districts do Good Friday and the week after, some districts do the week of, uh, Good Friday, and then other districts, similar to us, take a break late March, first week of April, because that's when everybody needs a break. And, and it also avoids some conflicts with testing, as I understand. Testing, when you get into mid and later April, that you run into conflicts with testing, as I understand it, looking at those windows. So for our district, again, different ways to look at it, it's, it seems to work that way.
Well, actually, I had that question also, because the third grading period ends on March the 24th, but we're not going on break until April the 3rd, so we're coming in for one week before we go on break. And typically, we would go on break right at the end of grading periods, because we've done that in December, so that we, we aren't starting something, uh, for that. So I was just curious as to why that extra week in March, we aren't on break, uh, starting the 27th, you know, 25th through 31st, 32nd.
I usually thought it was at the end of the grading period.
Well, that's what I thought, too, and then when I looked at this calendar the other day, uh, I thought, okay, why is that? Because normally I don't pay much attention to the calendar, other than what it is, but it jumped right out at me. At 24th and the third grading period, 46 days, and then we're coming to school for five days, and then we're going to be off for five days. I just was curious as to why that was, and I thought maybe it was because of some kind of testing that week, the end of March or whatever, because typically...
Yeah, sometimes it does align with the end of the grading period, the other, you know, other times it does not. The other thing that we look at, too... The other thing that we look at, too, is how it impacts other dates in the calendar. For example, if we would have taken the week before, that would be five full days. That would have allowed us to not finish on a Friday, but we would have had to come back on a Monday in June for one, one workday. Whereas by going the following week, we have four days and then Good Friday, that allows us to finish up on a Friday, June 1st. So the calendars are, are, I mean, it's to fit the pieces together and to make it work. It doesn't look exactly the same every year. Sometimes it lines up perfectly, other years it's.
So Easter's the night.
Easter is likely the night.
So.
So it does align up with Easter this year.
Yeah, this year.
Not, not this year, the coming.
This year would align with this year. When I say this year.
That makes sense. And I just wondered why, because typically, and I didn't, I didn't look to see what Easter is. Easter's early.
Relative early. This current school year, the 21, 22, Easter was much later. And I, I know that because we, our two sons teach in districts that had spring break later tied in with Easter, whereas ours was in March. So yes, it, sometimes it ties in with Easter here, and other times it does not. But I know our staff in general has always communicated that by late March, first of April at the latest, everybody's ready for a break.
Don't we get the Monday off?
Don't we?
We don't. We just, we usually just get the Friday.
It could be Friday. We've had years where, again, depending on maybe the end date, we could have taken the Monday off after Easter. But again, what that does is that extends another day at the end of the year and now takes you into a Monday, a one-day workday, you know, for staff. So there's a lot of moving parts that, and we do collaborate with the staff and our administrative team to look at this and how it impacts testing in your activities and commencement and all those types of things, so.
Thank you.
We give it our best shot every year.
That's all you can do. I'm glad that Norman Bowers would have their open system tonight for changing that.
Yes.
Matt was a fan.
Okay, any other questions or comments on 12A?
Yeah, 12, right?
12A through I? Hearing done, call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
And item 13 on tonight's agenda would be business recommendations?
Yes, just one item this evening. And you see it's in reverse, the lunch crisis. And we're recommending a 10 cent increase for breakfast and lunch. I would also emphasize with this particular item that actually this piece is a key part of our financial stability. It's always been our goal as a district, and it's been our practice, actually, for a number of years, that the food service program is self-sustaining. Some districts are in a position where they're forced to subsidize food service through the general fund. We've been fortunate to have a food service program that's able to operate, you know, within their own revenue and expenditures and looking, obviously, at what happens with, you know, inflation and cost of food. Our supervisor, DN, has recommended a very modest increase and certainly helps us, you know, maintain that stability moving forward. So with that, I'd like to recommend that item 13A.
Give a motion in a second. Any special arrangements for 13? Comments, questions?
Yeah, so one is the, I guess, communication plan for this, for parents for football?
Yeah, that would, DN would handle that, and that would be included in our website, postings, our back-to-school newsletters, those types of things.
It will have an impact.
Yes.
On next year tremendously, because for the last two years, everybody's gotten fed twice a day. So it's going to impact, because the government provided food for everyone. So it'll be a whole relearning experience from the way we charge, we don't take cash. So all those accounts have to be activated or reset up or new accounts for people who've never had an account. So it will be an education process, again, in that perspective.
And the one big item is the fact that we will be going, our families will be going back to completing the USDA free use penalization. That's a huge piece, because we've not had to do that for the 21st of the year or the 22nd of the year. It'll be different.
This is one of the nice things about like the weekly updates that we've actually done over the last couple of years. I mean, this will be an item that when we start those weekly updates and RMs that you'll see included in that, and of course, as I say, other back-to-school newsletters and websites and those kinds of things. So we'll try to communicate it in as many different avenues as, you know, as what we're able to do. So it will, it will be a lot, it will look a lot different next year, that's for sure.
And historically, Amherst is one of the few school districts that ever turned a profit. I mean, it usually is a cost factor.
Yes.
It is a huge cost factor. For example, if JVS loses other before COVID, anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 a year. So, you know, it's, it's a rarity, again, that school district turns a profit or breaks even with in-house lunches, because most of them have been sparmed out, okay? So they're either Aramart or they're at some of those organizations. Sineco, Aramart, Hot Wells or whatever.
Or Charmed.
Hot Wells, Hot Wells. It's the main thing going through my mind, this name. But all of those, and we, we have been solicited by that, but we have always maintained in the last 14 years that we could do it on our own and we've done very well, successful. So and I think we can continue to do that, because now it's an opportunity to be a grand, a part of that. I don't know whether the guidelines from the government was quite as strict as they were a couple of years ago. There might be some changes in that, but I don't know that. Because, you know, before we had the guidelines handed down, we couldn't sell this and couldn't sell that. We did a phenomenal job at lunch, because we sold everything that kids liked. And then the governor said, you can't sell things that kids like. You gotta sell everything that kids should eat. Which is a big difference. But then as soon as they get out of school here, they go to Hondo Academy. So I don't know what they can do.
Well, he can control.
That's correct. We can control that, so. Okay. Anything else we have to bring before the board this evening?
Can you circle back to the district handbook inside the committee? We have that or I'll have to.
Well, yes, the, the central office will start that handbook, and then it will come back for us to review. So I don't know what Christine's gonna, all four of them, from that perspective.
It'll definitely be a team effort.
Yeah, it'll be a team effort. So I would say let them put it together, develop that team, and then we will look at it and review that from that perspective. Because we don't know enough of all of the certain things to do in that handbook to do that. So it will be a central office team from the board, whoever else they engage from that perspective. But I do believe that Christine will probably be part of that as well, because it'll have to do a hiring, it'll have to some of those kind of. Okay?
Apologize for the timing.
Oh, it's a good document, especially when you have a model that we have agreed.
And we've got a good model.
It's an excellent model.
So is there anything else that we need to bring before the board this evening? Do you know?
I need a thought.
Huh?
I need to know.
We have to?
Oh, yeah. 13.
I was just wondering. I thought, did we vote on that yet or not? Yeah, I thought maybe I was.
Second, but I didn't want to forget, thank you.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels.
Aye.
Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa.
Aye.
Mr. Engel. Sorry.
No problem. And those of you who asked about the presentation, more information will come from this. And Janet will make sure we get it.
Yes.
And tomorrow night, you all know, Mark, you're going.
Michael was telling them that they'd have to rush, because we don't have a sign to see it certainly there, so.
Right.
It's already predetermined. Maybe you're, you're not.
Yes, I will leave that.
Don't tell them that.
She said she would.
I just wanted to thank everyone, the armed forces department, Sarah Mooney, that's been great. And it was nice to see everybody there and all of the support. And I mean, like, the local senior house phone was great. And I think that was great and that was senior, I watched it with attention, but the vote, I thought it was great. Yeah, I just thought that was a really nice event, and it was very well attended.
Thank you. With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Is there any discussion on that? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Aye.
Mr. Zappa. Dr. Messer.
Aye.
Mrs. Wackels.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.